Yeah, might look better.
Okay. Welcome everybody to the meeting of the Finance and Policy, Performance Policy Committee. The meeting today is open to the public and there are no items which contain exempt information. Meeting will be webcast and recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. It's also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. We've received no public questions or petitions for today's meeting. I can only request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting. There's no fire test plan for today. If there's an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the town hall staff. The assembly point is Tudor Square. So for the benefit of the webcast, can we please each Finance Performance Policy Committee member introduce themselves? I'll start with myself. I'm councillor Mike Leverick, West Ecclesfield Ward and Vice Chair of the Committee.
Councillor Gareth Slater, Southwark.
Councillor Mary Lee, Donald Ward and I'm a substitute today.
Good afternoon colleagues, councillor Eldard from Manor Castle.
Flynne, councillor Bluecomb, councillor Forth Park.
Councillor Martin Phipps, councillor for City Ward and Green Group spokesperson for the committee.
Councillor Douglas Johnson, new on this committee for City Ward and also Chair of Housing Committee.
Councillor Martin Smith, I represent Doran Tollywold.
Councillor Glynis Chapman representing Mossborough Ward.
Could the officers present themselves please?
David Hollis, General Counsel.
Philip Gregory, Director of Finance Commercial and Performance Services.
Joan Cooper, Democratic Services.
Thank you. So we'll move on to item one, apologies for absence. We've received apologies from councillor Sahir Nas and councillor Mary Lee is substituting. Item two, exclusion of the public and press, there are no items with any exempt information. Item three, declarations of interest. Have any members wished to declare an interest in any of the items of business on the agenda? No? Okay, on to item four. Minutes of the previous meeting. Are there any matters arising or are members happy to approve these minutes at this time? Okay, no matters arising, thank you, all approve those minutes. Item five, public questions and petitions. There's no public questions, petitions or statements for this meeting. Item six, members' questions. There are no members' questions for today's meeting. So item seven is the work programme. So can we move on to page 17 of the Agenda Pack? And ask Joan to go through the work programme please, thank you.
Thank you Chair. Just to update on the changes since the last meeting, I'm advised that Sheffield City Council's ethical procurement policy, it's been agreed that this be moved to September to allow for consultations to be undertaken. The quarter one budget monitoring report is to be considered in August rather than September. This is to allow for individual budget monitoring reports to be considered by policy committees in the September cycle of meetings. And the medium term financial strategy report is also to be heard in August. So the title fitting with it being heard at S and R on the 10th of July. Just to make members aware that you have got a printed supplement that has been circulated as well. It's an addendum to the capital approvals report. So you should have one of those on your desk if you haven't, there's a couple more here. Thank you.
Okay, any questions on the work programme? Councillor Dodds?
Thank you, I feel like this is becoming traditional. Welcome to colleagues who are new to this committee, this will be the first time you hear me make this point. But apologies to those of you who have been here a while, this is a bit of a refrain. So we've been discussing for some time, getting some knowledge briefings from some of the other committees to help us with our kind of wider understanding of how particularly the capitals approvals that come to this committee fit in with the overall strategies, particularly in housing, in TRC and in parks and communities. And I just wanted, it's taken a while, let's say, for those knowledge briefings to be arranged. And I note that they're not on our work plan going forward, unlike the knowledge briefing from the People Strategy. So I wondered if at minimum we could at least put them on the work plan. And then rather than me having to raise it every time, we would be in a position of knowing when they were going to come up. That would be very helpful. Similarly, we've had the council plan outcomes task force, which I know there's an intention for that to report back to this group. But that doesn't appear to be in our forward work plan either. So I wondered if we could identify a date that that will be coming back to this group. And then finally, and I'm speaking slightly in my newly acquired role as Chair of Governance Committee, where we've recommended to all committees that they have a work planning session at the beginning of the financial year. I wondered if we could include that on our forward planning also, so that we can make sure that we've got that scheduled at a time that suits all members. Thanks.
Thank you, we've got Philip.
So I understand Democratic Services are arranging the work planning session. My understanding is the current date for that is the 1st of July. Waiting for that to be confirmed. But yeah, we should get invitations out for that if that is the date for that, the afternoon of Tuesday, the 1st of July. We are also planning the briefing sessions for members. So we'll be looking at all member briefings at least once a month to meet up your expectations in terms of topics that we can cover. Some conversations with the representatives for parks and also sort of net zero climate and housing and for TRC as well. So we will get those booked in. The housing growth item is tentatively arranged for August. We'll get dates for those circulated and that will be available as part of that planning session in July.
Okay, Councillor Johnson.
Thanks for that. Yeah, positive I'm speaking because I'm new member here, but of course councillor Dodds' suggestions seem good. I just wanted to flag as well, in terms of just making sure that everyone's on the same page, which is fundamentally the point of these knowledge briefings. I'm aware that as a Chair of Committee, I get an advance note of the capital approvals that are coming through in relation to my committee. And that's a very welcome thing, that used not to happen. I think that's a really helpful step forward. I'd probably suggest two things. One is to make sure that those are sent to all three leads on my committee and indeed all other committees. So they're shared out, so it's not, it doesn't fall to the Chair necessarily to have to pass it on. But then secondly, when I was going through the performance report, I thought it might be helpful to have something similar for each element of the performance report also being sent to the three leads for each committee that deals with the substance of it. Looking at the housing ones, it's stuff that's familiar to the Housing Committee, but perhaps presented a slightly different way, which gives some additional insight. So I just wondered if I could flag those off. So I know that we're on the work plan item here, but maybe that could be taken forward in some way by the officers. Don't want to add to the workload, but I think it's important to get everyone on the same page.
Could I suggest we do pick this up under the performance management element? Because it is this committee's responsibility for overall performance management. I think how we break that down then into policy committees is quite a challenge. And I should suggest it's there where we pick it up. Okay, no more.
Thanks. I just wanted to come back, I think officers said that the ethical procurement policy was now scheduled for September, is that right? Because it was slightly different in the papers. In that case, could we get, I understand that, and indeed I'm encouraged that there's going to be a period of consultation. But I think we said in the last meeting, we would get a forward timeline for what was happening when, between now and when that was going to be agreed. I don't think I've seen that though, colleagues, correct me if I've missed something. So if we could get a sense of what's going to happen between now and September, particularly as colleagues will recall, this was something that we were aiming to have agreed in the spring. So having a sense of how we're going to make it to September would be helpful.
Yes, I think there's a note in the work planning against it that 30th of August is going to be a date for a briefing. So we'll presume that will be the final draft of the ethical procurement committee before it moves on. Okay, no more questions on work planning programme then, shall we move on to item eight?
I think you're referencing where it says the briefing's to be held on the 30th of April rather than the 30th of August. I don't think we've seen any updated timelines since then.
Yeah, I think we agreed that we would, we would get together, we'll get together and look at a final draft post consultation. So any amendments that have been made, we can finally ratify before it goes to this committee in September.
That, Chair, my, that's probably going to be the end of August, but I think councillor Dodds requests for a timeframe. I think we can probably do that as well. We are just looking at how we do the consultation. So I think we, once we know that and the timescales for the consultation, we can then get a note round to everybody saying how that will be launched and when it'll be launched and then when it's coming back.
Thank you. Okay, can we move on then to item eight, which is the council plan outcomes framework question for report?
Thank you James.
Good afternoon. So presenting today, the outcomes framework report for quarter four. This pertains to information that's been updated with in January and February, sorry, January, February and March 2025. As per normal, we've included the appendices that cover the vast range of outcome measures that we've got. And as per standard practice that we developed over the last few quarters, we're presenting the main item as a strengths and challenges document that brings forward areas of performance strength and challenge that we've curated for discussion today. What we'll say before getting into that, the last time we met, we had a big focus on outcomes four and five. Crave and Prosperous City and a city on the move. Given the longitudinal nature of a lot of those measures, there's little update this time. Last time we had significant updates on median wages and air quality, for example. So the strengths and challenges do focus on the measures that update more frequently, outcomes one, two and three and corporate health. So I'm going to start with outcome one, a place where children belong and all young people can build a successful future. And a key strength that we have reporting in this quarter is our families achieving significant sustained success within our Building Successful Families Programme. This is a key outcome measure for evaluating the effectiveness and reach of our early help and family services. Sheffield's part of a national supporting families programme which helps vulnerable families build resilience against complex needs. I'm pleased to say we've exceeded our target for the third year running and we've outperformed other cities in this area. How this measure is derived is that we are, we work with families based on a number of criteria that at the time of identification need to be turned around to help that family build resilience. That ranges from getting a good education, earliest development, physical and mental health, crime prevention and domestic abuse, to name a few. And we're then audited by the government honour returning how we've turned those, we've turned those families around. So this is really significant in being a, how we, how we bring to life the early help offering Sheffield. And while these figures show how we're performing in terms of turning these families around, it can also be evidenced in other parts of the outcomes framework with our very low comparative to other core cities and nationally. Children looked after, children in need and child protection cases. Moving on to challenges in this area, the last quarter, we flagged the percentage of newly made education healthcare plans that needed to be issued within, issued or completed within 20 weeks. This is a statutory duty. At the time, we flagged historically low performance. I'm pleased to say from the actions that have started to be taken, we're now starting to see that, that change. So it did dip at the start of quarter four to 7% from the 9.8% we flagged at the end of quarter three. But I'm pleased to say it's continued, it's started to climb. We're now at 16.5% compliance rate and the trajectory that I've seen going forward into Q1 has seen that increase further. So I'm hopeful we're going to see this climb, climb back towards where it needs to be from a target perspective. In terms of that recommendation, three in the report, ask that this committee, ask the Education, Children and Families Committee to keep close monitoring on this, on this issue and indicator. But as there are strong remedial actions in place, we don't feel that there's a further deep dive needed. Moving on to outcome two, great neighbourhoods that people are happy to go home, just a strength here. So the percentage of public site spaces that are managed at the Sheffield standard. So the communities, parks and leisure committees set a standard for our green spaces, including parks. In what we have to achieve in terms of signage, seating bins, flight tipping, graffiti and general, general access community involvement. I'm pleased to say we've met that target and the service showing kind of good performance maturity have now reset that target for the coming year. So they've achieved 85% and as much as we want to see with all performance measures, we now strive to do further. And they're aiming for 88% for 25, 26. Moving on to outcome three, people living care, people living care and engaged communities that value diversity and support wellbeing. There's a strength here in two measures in adults, in social care to start with, where they have now for both these measures exceeded the target around meeting the character assessment and putting care in place within their target timescales. Putting care in place has been performing well for some time, continues to. But it's only recently that they brought both these things together and that the character assessments are now completed within time scale. Add to that though, we do have a challenge in this area and that's the proportion of adults that are receiving an adult social care review. It's been on a continued downward trajectory and we now feel it's at a time to flag for some further action. Currently, it's at 52% compliance overall, based on a 75% target with some areas such as learning disabilities as low as 44%. On this, it's an important measure because it's not only about safeguarding our vulnerable clients within adult social care, but it also has a financial consequence as well. Because up to date, timely reviews help us make sure that we can deliver the right care at the right time and at best value to everyone involved. So what we recommend for this one, a recommendation for is that we do refer this to the Adults Health and Wellbeing Committee. But we also invite that, we also invite the Assistant Director of, sorry, the Executive Director of Adults and Wellbeing to come back to this committee in Q1 and provide a bit of a deep dive with me. So essentially doing this section again, but really getting under the hood of what's going on here. And by that time as well, what contingency has been put in place to start to turn this measure around. And lastly, we have corporate health, again, starting with the strength. In the final quarter of 2425, the in-year collection rate for council tax is just 0.14 below its target. So this is significant, this is fourth successive year that they've improved on this. And they seek to, in the next year, actually get to 100% of that target that they've set for themselves. And then potentially, as we've seen in the other measures, start to set a new target that exceeds that. So that's a strong strength in this area. Challenging in this area, ones that we've seen previously are proportion of FYI's responded to within time scale. We have included some comparative data there, so Sheffield's not a huge outlier in terms of, in terms of the core cities. There's only two other authorities that actually meet the ICA's timescales. But it is a piece of work that we want to really, really get into again with a deep dive. So this, along with the other measure there around securities incidents that are starting to creep up, we want to do a really detailed piece of work with the incoming Assistant Director for Democracy Information and Elections and come back to this committee in quarter two of 2425 with a report on, again, some of the recalls about that point, some of the remedial actions that have taken place with a view to, as it's in the remit of this committee, assuring you that we're on track to bring this back into compliance. So that concludes my strengths and challenges for this quarter. I'll pause there for questions, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Slater.
I've got two, but I'll do one at a time just to make your life easier. Page 53 on the not known. How does that compare with other cities? And I guess the other thing is how do we not know? What is a form not being filled out? Are we losing contact with these people or what's happening? And is there a timeframe that we will find out?
You might come, James.
So comparatively, I'll have to pull that up, I know we do perform well in this area. If we look at children and families performance, and what this actual measure, specifically the not known is called out. We do perform really well on keeping in touch. I think we're actually the best in the country on keeping in touch with young people. But they are a cohort that are sometimes difficult to pin down in terms of timeframes.
So is that what's happened?
It's not, it's not that we've lost contact, we just don't know their status at the moment. So that's in terms of whether they're in education, whether they're unable, unopen for the labour market. That is something the service is always keen to kind of close down and we're doing, we're doing really well in that respect in terms of keeping in touch. But I agree, yes, we probably need to look a bit deeper into that. So if I could come back to you after that with a comparison, I can't quite pull that comparative data up right now. But what I can reassure you on that measure specifically, because we have this measure. Those that are in education, employment and training is the headline measure. Under that, the Children and Families Committee, we're then getting to the statutory needs. The not knowns for this group and for those of the HCPs are a set measure that's looked at individually with narrative. That's why I don't have it just to hand today. And then also the rates that we keep in touch with, with young people that are identified as neat. Well, that's one, two or three months. And I know nationally we do, we're one of the best in that respect.
Councillor Johnson?
I didn't have a chance to come back on that, but actually I just want to follow up on that. So because looking at that same page, page 53, isn't my reading of this, that if we're saying that 12% of these young people, and bear in mind this is the young people with education, health and care plans who we know, 12% are not in education, employment or training. And we're saying 21% we don't know. If we don't know, doesn't that mean almost necessarily because they're not in education and training? I don't mean to sort of labour this point, but of course, you know, needs are, we are aware, yeah, it's a really important issue for so many social reasons, not least the wellbeing of these individual young people. Maybe I don't need to answer that question now because I've heard you say that you'll take that away. But just over the page, on page 54, there's a linked question. And these are the care levers 1619 who are not in education, employment or training. And on the bottom right box, it says comparative data is not available, so we don't know. But also, and this is possibly a feature of the format of this report, it doesn't tell you what the, how many of our children are neat in this case. It shows we've got a target of 47%, but what is the percentage of where we are to try and meet that target?
In terms of this one, because it wraps up all our care levers 16 to, 16 to, actually it's 16 to 90. The comparative figure is broken down into different groups where we look at it as a whole. So I think if you wanted to do that, and that does happen again at Children and Families Committee, again, if that's helpful, to slightly tweak that for this group, that's not a problem, it does allow you to see, see where you are.
If I can go back, yeah, possibly that's one you can take away. Can I just ask the next one, I think it's on page 71. Again, this is children killed or seriously injured in road traffic accidents. I just wonder about the wording of that, is that a statutory thing? Because routinely in this council, we've taken objection to the word accidents. Generally speaking, when people run children down on the roads in a vehicle, it's not an accident. It's about reckless control of the vehicle. Is this something that we can change to collisions, which is generally the word that's used as a more respectful way of doing this?
Going back on that one, in terms of the wording, it's a national public health indicator. But if you know, we've not had a significant update on this for some time, we're awaiting one. So I'm hoping we get an update on this in quarter one and quarter two. Equally as with other, not committees, but within the directorate, there's lots of data underneath this. My intention was when we brought this one back, that we unpacked that a little bit because it wraps up whether it's collision, accident, pedestrian. We could unpack that when we report it back because it would be significant, a significant outcome measure update. And there is some very detailed data that we can bring underneath it. And I would imagine would include that, hopefully it's a strength reporting as that point that's improved. But equally, if it's a challenge, we can bring that back and report that granular level data that supports, supports the outcome level, if that's helpful.
I think that would be helpful, but obviously this is something that straddles both Education, Children and Families Committee, which it's in this section of, but also colleagues in Transport, Regen and Climate, for me it's really important as well. And obviously it's really topical at the moment because, you know, last week we've had two children lose their lives on the road and that's just really awful. Thanks.
Councillor Johnson?
Councillor Smith, can't read me all right. Thank you Chair, we're obviously double gangers.
They always get this mixed up.
Sorry Chair. Performance on City on the Move, page 145. About the number of new homes under construction and completed. I'm aware that that's obviously quite a contentious issue at the moment. But I'm just wondering how those numbers are gathered? They seem to suggest that it takes nearly four years to build a house. And how, how does the council actually get the data on when a building project is committed? I understand the process of getting the permits to start work. But how do we, how do we know when something's finished? Thank you.
I think councillor, that's one I'll have to take back to the level of detail as well from, from the service that have that underneath. Where we are at outcome level, we get that fed up to us. So if I could take that away as a specific question, because I think when, when we've talked previously on this one, there's probably some strengthening of the measure rationale on this one. I think my question's that about affordable homes as well. So I think if I bring that back in the paper next time and strengthen the, the measure description really, so we can, we can see what we're measuring here.
Great, thank you very much. Councillor Lee?
Sorry, I can see there's been a slight improvement on people's, people's attending school, that's increased slightly. Is that due to cohorts moving on or is it to do with actions that have been taken at high schools and by ourselves?
So it's a combination of, it's really good that that's starting to move now and we're moving in line with national trends as well. So overall, attendance is improving in general post Covid. But in Sheffield, there's been some strong actions taken through, I mean, we talked about there before, the Building Successful Families measure. One of, one of those criteria that are included in that is school attendance and our early help workers working with families to improve school attendance. So it's difficult to forensically pull apart the two. But I, I would imagine if Sheffield wasn't doing that strong work as well, we wouldn't be getting the figures that we're getting. And we'd be slightly different in terms of that recovery curve. So it's a bit of both really in terms of attendance is improving in general, but we are doing a lot, lot as a council. And I think it was reported recently through the Education, Children and Families Committee in terms of early help work and intervention work from the attendance teams.
Is that work then that's been carried out by the family hubs in those areas? Is that work then that's been carried out by the family hubs in those early years period, as well as at schools, and particularly transitions from junior schools to secondary schools? Because, you know, that transitional period is really, really difficult for some kids, isn't it?
Yeah, so that work goes along a range of services. So from early years into primary, it'll be our family hubs. And children that are already in primary and secondary schools, it's the inclusion and advice teams, and our early help teams that will help those pupils. So it's really in the sort of what children's services are doing across the piece really, but it varies depending on the different age groups and whether you're in school already.
Thank you, Council Dobb.
Thank you, and thank you, James, for this report. It's really helpful to see, and I agree with Council Johnson's suggestion that it would be great to see this circulated to the other policy committee chairs. I'm sure they would find it really useful to be able to read and perhaps can input through us if they've got questions or things they want to follow up on. My first question relates back to my work plan question, which is about the work that's been ongoing in the task working group, task group, whatever we call it, to try and update some of these indicators, which may pick up on a couple of the comments that our newer members have raised. I know that you and colleagues are working to change some of the things that we've been focusing on based on feedback from across parties. I just wondered when that will flow through into these updates that we're getting. Perhaps you can take that first, and then I'll come back with some other questions.
Of course. So we'd expect to see the first changes start to come through in quarter one next year, so start fresh reeling quarter one, twenty twenty-five. The intention is not to really change too much, because we want to see distance travelled over, but to add additional measures that kind of strengthen and answer some of the questions that we've got here today. I think the thing as well is that it's making more use probably of the information that's presented to the other policy committees as well, as our performance system matures. Because questions we've had today sit further down in some of those layers, but where they're pertinent, we'll bring them up to the other level. So we will start to see the first measures based on data availability come available in quarter one, and that I imagine it will be iterative updates to those as we go through the coming year. And then we'll go through that review cycle again, probably around the same time. So for quarter one, twenty-six, twenty-seven, we'll reframe the outcomes metrics again.
Great, thank you. Be great to see the revised overall as part of that. I had a question, which is building on the success of the Building Successful Families programme that you were referencing. It's brilliant to see that we're achieving so much through that programme. It's both great for the individual families who are being benefited by that programme, but of course it's got many benefits to the public purse also, and in terms of the wider impact on the outcomes that you were mentioning. It reminded me that in our budget this year, we agreed that we would target investment on early intervention and prevention, particularly in our most disadvantaged communities. And I'm wondering what we can learn from how that programme is delivering so successfully that might be relevant to other work streams or other areas of the council's business, and whether it was worth a sort of showcase of what's been successful about the work that that team have been doing in the early intervention and prevention space, so that colleagues across the council, including councillors, would be able to learn from that.
It sounds like an excellent idea. I'm sure the teams that do this work are very passionate, would love to present back and probably present back some case studies as well, that really can humanise it from a family perspective. I think from a more technical perspective, what's made this programme measurable is the fact that we do action plans against set issues, and then we turn them around, so we can actually measure that. Early help's very difficult to measure. This made that aspect of it measurable to some degree, and gives us a strong indicator to use as a proxy really, for some of the other things in the framework, like I've talked about, children's social care. But yeah, definitely having a showcase of those things would be really useful and beneficial, I think.
Thanks. And your reference to the measurability makes me think, I wonder, and colleagues in finance might want to comment on this, obviously this is a dual purpose committee, so I'm straddling between the outcomes and the finance, but if we know that this programme is having benefits across multiple outcomes that weren't just the outcome it was designed to measure, I wonder if we can try and quantify what the kind of savings to Sheffield as a whole, not just to the council. Obviously, we're talking about things that might be beneficial in our health service or in our criminal justice system, as well as just the council services, but to try and get a sense of what the overall saving is from being able to have invested in early intervention and prevention.
No, again, that sounds like a really good idea in that respect. What we potentially hope to get from this as well, with that section probably not coming to an end, but transforming into some of the new ways of working under the Children and Families DFE space, is that there might be a kind of a national piece of research done in it like they did with Show Start, to see what the benefits of those programmes going forward, so we can take that learning forward. And we're probably seeing some of the family hubs where we've used some of the Show Start data from the past to inform some of the work that's been done there now in terms of our family hubs and early years work.
Great, thank you. Philip, is that something that the team might be able to take forward? Great. And then my final comment, if I may, Chair, again, slightly putting my governance hat back on, it was good to see that you're suggesting a deep dive into the FOIs issue, and to kind of get more, focus a bit of attention on that, and particularly to think about what we can be proactively publishing. I think that would be really important. Obviously, FOIs are only one small part of the way that we engage with the public or that the public engage with us, but it's really important that we're seen to be responsive and transparent in that. So glad to see that that's something that's been picked up as part of this outcomes review and something that we can try and tackle.
Thank you. Jane, you've come a long way with, oh, sorry. Sorry, Douglas, carry on.
Right, thanks for coming on to answer all the questions that you can't possibly have the answers to at your fingertips there. So just make it extra difficult. Improved local biodiversity, I'm looking at page eighty-three. And the point is, on page eighty-three, there's a graph there that appears to show a nosedive in performance three years ago, and then consistently saying below target then. Not expecting you to give a detailed answer now, but there's two points I wanted to make, and I wonder if you can take away with you. One is, say, does this flag up the need for more resource in biodiversity with our ecology officers to make sure that things are up to standard, that we can get above our fairly low level of targets there, and see if we can bring that back up? I don't know whether this is about the substance of poor conservation, which it probably isn't, or whether it's about the ability to have enough staff to monitor and check on the sites that we do have. So I wonder if you could take that away. The second point is that is this not an opportunity, given that, you know, we have biodiversity net gain in our planning system now, to actually identify the resources of the council here that we could use? It just seems an opportunity to enhance those local wildlife sites and really max them out with developers' contributions, but also give developers an outlet for those cases where they genuinely can't put the biodiversity gain on sites, which should always be the top priority, but where they can't, we need to have some capacity to absorb that. I don't know if you can comment on whether that is a relevant factor behind that apparent nosedive, or if it's just something to take away with you.
Thank you, Council. I think it's something to take away and talk to service about, but I do know from the narrative that provided for this is that there's been some governance issues, and I know some of the sites have dropped out of the positive conservation management scheme due to our expiry and management evidence, and the service are working very hard to kind of bring that back into compliance, so they can then measure those sites and potentially improve performance in that space.
Council Phipps.
Thank you, Chair. Going back to page seventy-one on children killed or seriously injured in road traffic collisions. I don't think we've covered this yet. I was just wondering why there isn't a narrative on how are we doing like there are on the other measurements? Because I know obviously we take that very seriously as a council, and we need to do more. And as a member of the performance side of this committee, I'd like to be able to see what we're doing on that section, so we can mark it down next time and see how we've progressed on our actions to reduce it.
It's a really good question. So this is a measure that has not been updated during the life of this council plan. So we've not requested a narrative per se. If we wanted to, thinking about, we're on the cusp of those figures being released, we could ask for a baseline narrative to see where we're up to. Because the figure we've had has been with us for five quarters now, since we started in quarter four of last year. And expecting when this new information's released, service to do quite an in-depth piece, because it will feature for me as a strength or challenge really, in terms of whether it's hopefully improved or declined. And we will get into, as I said in the previous question, into some of the more granular data underneath, and understand why. It's quite an event metric, similar to GCSE results and the median wages that we had last time.
And I've just got one more, if that's okay. On page thirty-eight, I think it was possibly one of the first things you covered today on the newly made HCP issued or completed within twenty weeks. I understand in the narrative, it talks about it being a national issue, and talks about an improvement plan, so hopefully we'll see progress on that. I just wanted to understand, why is it so low, like sixteen point five per cent versus the fifty-five per cent target? So what is the national issue?
So nationally, and playing out in Sheffield, there's two things. There's high demand for HCPs, and then it's mentioned the narrative that to complete an HCP, while it requires partnership and lots of members of the education, health and care community, you need an education psychologist, and there's a national shortage of those psychologists within the country that's available to us.
Thanks, that's quite a drop off, isn't it, in like twenty twenty-three availability, I guess? Thank you.
Council Slater.
Thank you very much. You thought you dodged my second question, but yeah. Just on page seventy-seven, so this is bringing council property back into renting again. So one, is there any newer data? Because this is Q2 twenty-four, twenty-five. And then Birmingham and Bristol seem to be doing good things here. Are we going to learn from them? What are they doing that's different? That's the question, yeah.
Yes, it's answered your question around new data being non-updated this quarter. So I expect some new ones. I think on the comparator, it's useful to have that, because it shows us where we can be, but the comparative data can be out of sync as well. But in terms of your question, yes, that's something to take back to service, I think, and say, it's always good to look at best practice, see how we can adopt that here, and again, looking to comparators that are performing in this space, learn from what they've done, and try to improve that way. So that is something I'll take back with the housing service.
Council Johnson.
Just on that one, as Chair of the Housing Committee, I can say a little bit about that, because Housing Committee meets on Thursday, in our performance report, we've got a bit on voids, and you're quite right to draw attention to it, because it's been something that's been dogging the council on time. And it is relevant that this is, I think this is the July twenty-three figures, so it's up to eight twenty-four, so there has been a steady improvement in the addressing of voids there, because that, obviously, void properties don't help any of us in the city.
Thank you. I think, James, thanks ever so much for this and what you've done so far, and where we are. I think the mere fact that we're actually starting to do deep dives on certain data, as we can see where we've got issues, and also recognise the fact that we're doing well in other areas, means that at some stage, it's not just about the committees owning their data. I think the members should own this policy of performance management, understand it, what it's about. This committee might be responsible for overseeing it and managing it through, but at some stage, I think the members across the council need to have an overview of this and understand what's in it. And we're happy that we've got the data more or less where we want it to be, and then a process of briefings, so people can get an understanding of it, and even within the relevant committees can discuss their bits of it and which are appropriate. And I think we're on into getting very close to that stage of the process. Thank you. Okay, so on to the recommendations then. So we're noting the council plan outcomes framework, quarter four report, that evidences our improvements to show distance travel against each council plan priority. We agreed to continue to receive quarterly reports and provide an overview of performance against outcome measures. Request Education, Children and Families Policy Committee to carry out close monitoring of the HC plan and related measures, and request adult health and social care policy to carry out close monitoring of the annual review and related performance measure. Are we agreed on those recommendations? Council Dobb.
Agreed, I think that they're all good recommendations, but if we can maybe note in the minutes also the point about doing a financial dive into the Successful Families Programme, I think that would be a helpful thing to have come out of this, if colleagues are agreed.
Record that, can we? Yeah, lovely, thank you. Are we all agreed on these? Great, that's unanimous, thanks very much. Okay, we'll move on to item nine then, which is a quarter twenty-four, twenty-five, forty-four budget monitoring report. With Jane.
Thank you, Chair. I'll start if that's okay. So Philip Gregory, Director of Finance, Commercial and Performance Services. So when we look at our budget forecast and our outturn position, the context is still one where we have significant funding reductions that we've seen across the sector since twenty-ten. We've seen reports in our NTFS that show that Sheffield has twenty-eight per cent less funding per resident as a result of that reduction since twenty-ten. We've also seen, as James has referenced, the demand for many of our services, particularly those that support our most vulnerable citizens, has continued to increase following COVID and the cost of living crisis, as well as the implications that we've seen across the country impacted by the effects of increased inflation. We've seen the cost of delivery of many of our services increase by more than the cost of inflation. So we've seen this triple whammy that we've reported to you before of reduced funding, increased demand and increased costs, which all result in the financial position that we report to this committee in this quarter four outturn report, which is an overspend of thirty-four point seven million pounds. Now, that's a similar position to that that we've reported each quarter to the committee throughout the year. The report also references the fact that we haven't seen a persistent failure to deliver savings that have been agreed. The current forecast estimates that of the forty-three million pounds in savings that were agreed as part of budget setting, forty million pounds will be delivered this year, which is a delivery rate of almost ninety-four per cent. Now, these savings do include additional grant income. If you strip that out, we're still delivering nearly ninety per cent of those savings that we've agreed. So the main drivers for the overspend this year are similar to the pressures faced over the past few years. These include persistent demand and cost pressures in adults and children's services, in their social care, growing needs, as we've referenced before, in special educational needs in the HCPs, and then home school transport, which often follows, an unprecedented surge in homelessness, leading to increased housing benefit losses. So work has been happening throughout the year to address all of these overspends. The in-year impact of that work has been limited in some of those cases. We have seen improvements in others, so the number of families, for example, in bed and breakfast accommodation has reduced consistently throughout the year. We're seeing fewer void properties because we've changed the allocation policy to allow more people to move into those who would otherwise have been in separate accommodation. We are also working hard to look at the mitigations that we put in place to limit the overspends that we will see potentially occurring in twenty-five, twenty-six. The financial position also underlines the importance of the work at Future Sheffield, so we are seeing improvements through our digital services and customer experience, which will be the first part of that programme to deliver. The programme is looking to identify ways for the council to deliver the right services in the best way possible, contributing to the economic growth of the city, achieving the city goals, and delivering against our council plan priorities. So while we're clear that this isn't a comfortable financial position to be in, action is being taken to address overspends, and through Future Sheffield, put the council into the right size and shape to be financially sustainable into the future. I'm going to hand over to Jane, she might have some more specific details that she wants to pick out from the report before we open up for questions from members. Thank you.
Thank you, Philip. So I'm Jane Willby, Assistant Director of Finance and Accounting. And Philip, I think has covered the main points that I was probably going to cover anyway, but that's absolutely fine. So the final outturn is a thirty-four point seven million overspend, which is about seven per cent of our net revenue budget, which is broadly in line with the thirty-four point eight million forecast that we reported at quarter three, which is demonstrating a stable and well-managed forecasting position throughout the year. So it's clearly not the position we'd want, but we can take some assurance from the robustness in So it's clearly not the position we'd want, but we can take some assurance from the robustness and consistency of our financial monitoring. The finance team has applied a strong quality assurance to ensure that the reported position is a true and fair reflection of our financial performance. To fund the overspend, the council will draw on seven point nine million from a specific provision that was set aside for our housing subsidy losses. And twenty six point eight million from the budget contingency reserve. This leaves a residual budget contingency balance of eight hundred thousand for twenty five twenty six. And if further overspends arise next year, we will try, need to rely on specific earmarked reserves, making it essential that we continually assess this reserve's position. To ensure our resilience against future risks. The most significant movement since the last report was in adult social care, where the overspend increased by two point six million, which bringing the total to thirteen point eight million overspend. This was driven by undelivered savings, growth in client numbers and an increasing cost of the existing care packages that we've got. The pressures were partially offset by positive movements elsewhere in the council, following the final reconciliations of fundings and costs that we've done at year end. The main drivers of the overspend this year, as Philip's already outlined, is persistent demand and cost pressures in adults and children's social care. The rising needs in special educational needs across the board, resulting in home to school transport increases. And the unprecedented surge in homelessness, leading to housing benefit subsidy losses. The housing revenue account also reported a four point three million shortfall, with repairs service overspending by seven point three million. This reflects the challenges that we have in maintaining our ageing housing stock, increased work on void properties and a high reliance on subcontractors and agency staff. In previous years, we've mitigated some of these pressures in year using one off funding and service level reserves, but this year, the opportunities that we have are more limited. This is shown on the table on page one hundred and eighty nine. We're now facing underlying budget shortfall of thirty seven million in our budgets. A balanced budget has been set for twenty five twenty six, with some targeted allocations to address some of the pressure areas, particularly in children's and adult social care and home to school transport. And this has been guided by our priority based budgeting approach. Continued work is needed to manage those demands and reduce the costs in these pressured services. So looking ahead, the Future Sheffield Transformation Programme is our strategic programme for change. And it's going to look at how we modernise the way we work, improve service delivery and support long term financial sustainability. So the programme is focused on building a sustainable operating base and will be the key to addressing the challenges that we face. Finally, the outturn does include a carry forward of a hundred and twenty thousand five hundred in the base budget for priority projects that could not be completed within the year. These are one off allocations to support project completions in twenty five twenty six and don't represent ongoing commitments. So I'll be asking for committee approval as part of the report. The appendices included are the detailed monitoring information for each of the committee budgets. The capital programme monitoring for the quarter four, which Damien will shortly give you a briefing on. And the treasury management outturn position for quarter four, which is closely linked to the capital programme. And shows our plans for capital financing and borrowing requirements. The interest from our investments have remained strong, returning an average of over five percent over the past twelve months. New borrowing is more expensive than anticipated and we have avoided any new borrowing and used internal borrowing instead. Rates are still expected to reduce in twenty five twenty six and if possible, we'll wait for a more opportune time to externalise debt. Two of the council's low bill loans were called during twenty four twenty five. And this is the notice that the lender is going to increase rates, at which point we have the option to repay the loan. So total repayments was twenty four point five million and we repaid twelve million of public works loan boards during the year too. It is likely we will have other calls on our lobos this year and we are actively managing this risk. So I'll just hand to Damien to cover the capital outturn position.
So yes, the capital outturn report is a separate appendix to the document. The context of the capital programme remain challenging around increased costs, issues in supply chain and the labour market and a high demand. Of which can increase costs, but also delay them, as we have to then perhaps go out and seek additional funding in order to be able to continue. And have fully funded schemes. The programme outturned at a hundred and thirty eight point four million, which was against the budget at month twelve of a hundred and seventy point three million. Section two of the document summarises how the budgets moved since the last report at quarter three. So while it hadn't changed significantly overall, there were some increases and some reprofils, but it remains steady at around a hundred and seventy. Section three shows a breakdown of the year end position by policy committee area. So net slippage, which I'll come on to and explain a little bit more later, because we have a specific section on slippage in section six. Was around nine percent, which was consistent with last year. Outliers by percentage in terms of net slippage were the Wasteland Street team. But that's only a very small, there's only like two or three schemes on there and it's only a couple of hundred thousand, but it was mainly due to delay in some flood tipping prevention work that was ongoing. Adult health and social care had slippage of around twenty five percent. And that's around a backlog on the disabled facilities grant works, that there's work ongoing in the service to be able to deliver that by issuing a new contract. Which is hoping to pick up a lot of that slack and we expect to see spending that area pick up. Strategy and resources, the slippage there was around issues we've had around dam repairs, particularly Abidale, where very complex pieces of work. And struggling with working with the Environment Agency to get the relevant permissions and advice for the correct way to operate that. And also the G P hubs that we're working alongside the Integrated Care Board with. Being able to secure the property for the city centre hub has proved difficult and so there's been some slippage around there. In terms of absolute values, in transport regeneration and climate change being possibly one of the biggest areas. We've seen delays on the Stockswish Towns Fund schemes. That again now seems to be moving forward, the community hub being the flagship part of that is expected to come for contract award in the next couple of months. The Transforming Cities Fund schemes, which are transport schemes around, so there's one particularly around City Centre, Darnall, Attair Cliff and Nether Edge Wedge. They've all seen some delay and extended design times, so they've added to the sort of slippage in that T R C area. Schemes of overspends were identified as around two million pounds this year. Although to be said, none of these were a call on our own reserves. Actually, the overspend were against approved budgets and tended to be a timing issue. We will only increase the capital budget when we have had confirmation of funding that's coming in. And they've had a, you know, a funding agreement in place. So actually, most of these related to awaiting the formal agreement of funding for a couple of Transforming Cities Fund schemes from SIMCA. Sorry, the Combined Authority and from N H S A England for the G P hub schemes at Foundry and Southend Parson Cross. That particular N H S one was resolved very shortly after year end and those budgets have now been approved and put in place. So there was nothing that was of concern to us and required additional funding from the authority. In terms of underspends, a large proportion, that two point four million was around an external wall scheme on our council housing programme. That wasn't able to be completed. So that probably looked at being re tended at some point, but that scheme in particular ended with a saving, which will come back to the Major Repairs Reserve to be reinvested in council housing. As the majority of the capital programme is grant funded, where there are underspends. There's a mixture of things that happen, it's either we complete a scheme under budget and therefore we don't claim as much funding as we needed. But in the majority of cases around, so for instance, education, where we have specific grant allocations each year, where we've had savings in those areas. They are returned to those allocations to be redistributed on new schemes. So in general, savings just allow reinvestment into capital projects. I've included details of the top ten schemes that were either over or under budget by year. I don't intend to go into the details of them, again, non specifically caused, had a cause for concern, but they are there with explanations of why they were either over or under budget for that year. Slippage then, I said, a few years ago, we distinguished between slippage and re profiling, where slippage is used as relating to schemes in delivery. And therefore seem to be behind profiling in terms of expenditure. And re profiling tends to refer to allocations where we have an allocation of capital programme for a specific activity. But we've not yet commenced delivery or got into detailed business cases around them. So we do distinguish between the two. Now, while at year end, slippage has been reasonably up nine percent, I do include a table that shows there's been significant re profiling and slippage during the year, which we've brought forward to this committee. So members have seen that, where we've said, you know, we need to move certain amounts of money into future years regarding specific schemes. And again, I think I've mentioned earlier, Stockswish Bridge Towns Fund, for instance, we've had some on the Future High Streets Fund programme and levelling up schemes. These larger programmes that have suffered from the pressure that we've had around going out to tender, costs being above, causing delays. So that has been going through. Part of this year's year end process, though, I would want to say is, we gave people the opportunity, usually in previous years, we've just slipped. Projects, hand spent budgets and needed to move them, we just moved them into the next financial year. So this year, we've given them the opportunity to move them into, to look at more forensically at how to expect the whole scheme to deliver. And allow them to move some of those budgets into future years, so that what we get is a realistic budget profile. So last year, whereas we came to you in, I think, July, already with a large proportion of slippage, saying can we move certain schemes into next financial year? I'm hoping that what we've done prior to this has set a much more realistic budget for this year. So this overall slippage, so the in year slippage should reduce as well. So that's what I'm hoping for, because we took some specific action around giving project managers that opportunity to say. Start this new financial year, don't just move your slippage into this year, look at where you can put it, look what you're realistically going to deliver and let's try and get a realistic budget. So fingers crossed, that's where we're going to be and I'm hoping to see a lot less of that in year slippage. We have got a section on funding as well. It's key, it's like eighty five percent of the capital programme is funded either through the housing revenue account, the Major Repairs Reserve. Or it's grant funded from either central government or other public bodies, which is largely the Combined Authority. Borrowing's reduced as the Heart of City scheme's completed. So there's much less borrowing at the moment identified within the capital programme. And I think that is what I was going to say on that.
Thanks, everyone. Counselor Johnson. My first again, right, thank you. Yeah, thanks. You cover a huge amount of data there and so thanks for the report that's got a lot more detail in it. I was looking at page one hundred and ninety one, so I've got two things to raise. One is about the overspend on the temporary accommodation and exempt accommodation, because they're huge areas where it has huge impact on our budget. So I'm very keen to do something about that and a separate issue about the playing pitch strategy. On the supported and the exempt accommodation, I just wanted to give you some insight about where we're going with this. So certainly on the exempt accommodation, I'm aware that, so this is an issue that's been knocking about, it's quite a serious issue for about three years. I'm also aware it is quite a technically complex area of benefits law. And Alexis Chapel, when she was Director of Adult Services, had picked this up and was taking that particular bull by the horns. And I'm just wondering if we're going, where we're going with this and if it's being worked on. Ask this partly because, and just yesterday I checked up what's happened to my inquiries on this subject and I have sent an email asking for a bit more information. But I just noticed I hadn't had replies and I just want to make sure that it's being dealt with. I think at the heart of this, I'm just aware that on the exempt accommodation, by far the majority of the spending goes to one provider. That one provider, we're treating as a not for profit provider and it really doesn't look, smell or feel like a not for profit provider, because they're making quite a lot of money. Don't need to go into more detail than that now, but I just want some reassurance that it's being addressed there. Is there anything more you can say other than what's in the reports, which I'll say note here? Shall I just let you comment on that first?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Counselor. I'll pick that one up. So that work will continue. Chris Ellison will pick that work up now that Alexis Chapel is no longer here. We are looking carefully at exempt accommodation and supported accommodation. We are looking at that from two angles. One is the providers of that accommodation and making sure they're compliant and providing the right level of support that they commit to. And that they're operating in the right way. The other side of that, though, is the application of the benefits legislation. So the revenues and benefits team are looking carefully at how we apply benefits legislation to claims, making sure that we are as robust as we can in terms of compliance with those claims. So we're coming at this on, if you like, both angles, both on the suppliers and also from the legislation, making sure we're as compliant as we can be on both angles.
All right. Thanks very much. That's welcome. Personally interested in this and I will follow this up with Chris. Just on the temporary accommodation, just going to say now, just for members' benefit, there's a paper coming to Housing Committee on Thursday about temporary accommodation strategy. And our staff have made an inroad into that, although a very big area of overspending, so that's welcome there. The third point I had was about the playing pitch strategy, so I'm still on page one hundred and ninety two and over to one hundred and ninety three. So this is one of the specific recommendations to roll this forward. And actually, on the recommendation, I want to propose a small amendment, but it's effectively subject to consultation with the lead members of Community Parks and Leisure Committee. Who understand, don't know about this. And the reason I'm flagging this up is that although the playing pitch strategy sounds like the sort of thing you want to support. In practice, it seems to have gone against quite a lot of the holistic thinking and has been a bit of a blocker for many projects. So in my experience, it's been a blocker on issues around flood defences and then others about actual provision of, you know, something could be made into good five aside football areas. So I've had concerns raised about the appropriateness of that. And so in other words, I wouldn't want us just to endorse this explicit rollover without a little more scrutiny. Which probably isn't appropriate to happen here, but within that particular committee. There's no reason why you know a great deal about that now. If there's anything you can comment on that, then please do. But just want to see if I can bring that in as a slight amendment to the recommendation.
In terms of the carry forward requests, so the values that are outlined in the paper are assumed in the final outturn position. So we do need to have that approved today in order so that we can submit our full accounts, et cetera. So we would like, you know, to progress with that. To give you a little bit more information, it's the playing pitch strategy sits under the sports and leisure strategy and can be used to inform planning applications, guide investment and support, funding applications. And can help with allocation of section one oh six or sports compensation payment for new development. And it's supporting the local plan and projects under the provision of playing field sites under the jurisdiction. So as I understand it, I'm pretty sure that the sports and leisure will be in consultation already with the Communities' Parks and Leisure Committee. But that's something that we can follow up outside of today. But in terms of the recommendation for approval, I think David, I'll refer to you, that we probably want to progress with the approval on that today.
Could I just clarify, David, before you come in, just I'm not proposing to try and make any attempt to block the proposal, having with the recommendation to allow that to carry over. But just asked for it to be, for C P L members to be consulted on it. In other words, what I'm saying is that actually members need to have some oversight of this, given all the downsides to it, so it will not be left just to officers.
Yeah, I don't think, there's no problem with that, whether it's a formal change or whether we note that, because that's what's been raised and we'll pick it up with C P L members. Okay, thank you. Counselor Chapman.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Philip, you talked at length about the adult health and social care and education. But when you look at the figures on page one eighty eight. Quarter one, we were over budget thirty four thousand. Quarter four, we were still over budget thirty four thousand. And although other departments made loads of savings. The adult health and social care and education and children's and families both overspent greatly through the year. Have we made sufficient budgeting this year to cover for that? It's no point having an overspend that is the same all through the year. Everybody else works hard, but that just seemed to go up.
Yeah, so we took this into account as we looked at budget setting. It was one of the things that was raised by external audit and also that we've picked up through the year. We don't want to get into this position where there's a cycle of we set a balanced budget and then we have an overspending year. One of the things that we're looking at is the assumptions that we One of the things that we're looking at is the assumptions that we use as part of budget setting to make sure they're as accurate and reliable as possible. I think the other thing is making sure that services are clear on what their demand is. We need to work in tandem with services to make sure that their demand forecast is as accurate as possible. We work to quite long time scales in terms of our medium-term planning. So as we're looking to set the budget and we sort of look at the budget gaps and what budget we provide for services, with bringing a report to Strategy and Resources Committee in July, which will set the envelope really for the next financial year. And we will have had to take a view on what the demand is for twenty-six, twenty-seven already, because we need to build that into the assumptions that we make. So we are working to some quite long time scales that don't necessarily react to what happens in between when we start setting the budget cycle to the first of April in the financial year. So what we're looking at is quite a long time period between those two things happening, setting the budget and the first of April actually sort of happening. We are working closely with those services to look at what mitigations they put in place, what actions they take in order to bring in reductions in spend and improved outcomes. We are also really conscious of the fact that part of the budget setting cycle is assessing how much budget growth. So how much increase in budget services get. A large proportion of the budget growth in previous years, including for twenty-four, twenty-five, was for social care services. And that's where the majority of the budget increases go. Actually, the much of the savings then have to fund those growth allocations for those services. So we are looking very closely at how we do that process, both for the processes concluded for twenty-five, twenty-six, but then also as we roll forward into future years, to make sure we can get that as tight as possible.
Yeah, and just one other point. On page two one two, repairs and maintenance overspend of seven point three million. Every year, there is a budget, goes up for this, but every year they overspend. Are we getting to grips with this repairs and maintenance?
That's a challenge that we put to our colleagues in housing quite often and regularly, looking at this. It's not an isolated issue for Sheffield City Council. So it's a nationwide issue where pretty much anybody with an HRA is under the same pressure to look at repairs and maintenance, particularly around inflation. There's a particular cost pressure there because of the work that's required and the costs escalate quite rapidly. We are putting some significant work into understanding how we can continue to improve. There's a particular transformation piece of work in housing, which is taking place, looking at the overall service, how that's provided, but also how we best provide repairs and maintenance. There are also links through to work we're doing in Sheffield around customer experience. So making sure that residents who are tenants in our properties can raise repairs in a way that is convenient for them, but in a way that they can also get feedback and also can provide feedbacks if there's an appointment that's set that they can't make, that they can change that with ease, rather than it being quite a cumbersome, long process. So we're looking at this from both ends. What can we support tenants with to enable them to better access our services? And also, what do we do with our housing service so that actually we're more able to provide a reliable service that provides things the right first time, send the right people who have the right skills to the right properties so that we can address issues as quickly as possible?
councillor Smith.
Thank you, Chair. Forgive me, but I've got a question on budget monitoring and then some on capital. Do you want them all together? Okay, thank you. Page two one seven, the overspend on legal services. I was just wondering what the, given it's quite a high percentage, what the key issue is? Is it the increased demand or is it sickness and recruitment? Just perhaps a wee bit more clarity on that would help my understanding. Do you want that one first and then the capital ones? Okay.
So the main issue has been recruitment and some temporary posts that have now been filled. So they're no longer filled by locum. So there was a high, both in the leadership team, there was a high level of locum usage that's now got permanent recruitment to. There remains some elements of areas where it's difficult to recruit to. And particularly post-COVID, we have difficulties getting people employed. And there is a reliance on the locum market there, which is significantly more expensive than having people employed. So we're looking to address that and working with colleagues in HR and looking at our workforce development. But that's the main reason. There will have been some elements of sickness, but the majority of it was down to recruitment.
Okay, thank you. On the capital approvals, the first one's not really a question. I'm one of the members for the Abidale Mill Pond. So I've been on-site two or three times now to look at just the complexity of that. So as a former project engineer, that's a heck of a job. Just a plea, anything you can do to help us board councillors with the communication of that, because all people see is a dried-up pond and they don't see the huge job that's going to take to repair it. So anything on that would be greatly appreciated. The two questions were on pages two seven nine and two eighty. On the Upper Don Valley project, it goes up by a million pounds, which basically doubles the forecast cost, which is a lot as a percentage. So I'm just wondering why. And on the Stocks Bridge Town Fund, again.
So are we on, you move on to capital approvals? Oh, sorry, I will be going through those. It's a separate item, so I'll go through them.
I did tell you I was a newbie.
That's okay.
No, no.
Chair, for me, just on the question around how do we communicate what's going on in areas where it just looks like something isn't happening, particularly around some of those heritage infrastructure assets that we have? I was speaking with the accommodation team earlier this week. We, particularly we've got Harris fencing, there are ways of covering that fencing where you can put things on there that will describe what's happening. So they're investigating that now. So it's not just plain fences that look like nothing's happened, but it's something that we can use actually to be able to communicate with people what's happening. So that's been investigated.
Thank you. councillor Fitz.
Thank you, Chair. It was just a quick comment, really. I was just reflecting on the amount of savings, in particular, adult health and social care, was allocated to deliver out of the total, like twenty-nine point nine million out of forty-two point seven million for the whole council, basically three-quarters. And to be fair, they delivered twenty-nine point four out of the twenty-nine point nine. So although it's frustrating that obviously demand continues to increase, so there is still increased overspend of about thirteen million, I think. I think it's worth reflecting that that's a good job, delivering twenty-nine point four million of savings. It's a hell of a lot.
I think the only thing we respond to with that comment is a large percentage of that was additional income. So significant. Yeah, we co-mingle savings and additional income together. We do separate them out, but it's just worth making that point and distinction there.
councillor Lee.
You might not be able to answer this question now, but I just wondered, between two thousand and ten, two thousand and nineteen, probably, there was significant budget loss from adult services and children's services. And I just imagine that has contributed greatly to this overspend now. And if we hadn't, those decisions hadn't been made by the coalition government at that time, then we would be in a better position now. That's a comment and a question, but you don't have to answer the question if you haven't got the figure. I remember how much was taken off, but it was significant.
Yeah, I think it would be difficult to disentangle how much is related to reductions in budget and how much is now demand. I think you would have seen all of those things happening at the same time. Certainly, we've seen an uptick in demand for both adults and children's social services, as well as an increase in the number of CPs. So certainly in recent years, we've seen increases in demand for all of those aspects, regardless of the funding elements that have been available.
Okay, I've one question myself on the housing benefits subsidy loss, which is climbing inexorably year on year, but it looks at five and a half million now. How are we going to get this under control?
So I think there are two elements that contribute to that. One is the temporary accommodation, which there's some very focused work happening. That's happened throughout the year. We've seen the numbers in temporary accommodation fall, particularly focused around families in temporary accommodation, particularly in bed and breakfast and hotels. So that targeted work will continue. Again, our focus is using more of our own housing stock to support people who are in need of temporary accommodation. So that will help. And we've spoken about exempt accommodation and the demand there. And the fact that we're addressing that both with providers, but also looking at how we apply the housing benefits regulations appropriately. So we have that provision set aside for twenty-five, twenty-six as well. And we'll keep that provision under review according to the progress made on both of those elements of housing policy.
Do we think we've turned the corner?
It's difficult to say because demand for homeless support continues to increase. So the need at the front door continues to be evident. Certainly, we're doing everything we can to mitigate that demand. And certainly, we are looking at being as intelligent as we can with our own housing stock to manage demand. I think I'd hesitate to say we've turned the corner, but it's certainly something that we're keeping a very close eye on and monitoring performance there very closely so that we can understand whether we have turned the corner, to use your phrase, or whether that demand is likely to continue to increase.
Okay, can we move to recommendations then? So we note the updated information on twenty-four, twenty-five revenue budget outturn. Described in the report, including detailed budget monitoring information and management actions provided. We approve revenue budget carried forward for the three items of fifty-eight K for the South East Wack, twenty-two point five K for the North Wack and forty K for the playing pitch strategy. And finally, we note the time-outturn information provided in the appendices in the paper for the capital programme and traffic, treasury management for the council. We all agreed on those recommendations.
Can I just play up? So just on the amendment suggesting before about the playing pitch strategy, how do you want to take this? I mean, do you want to add in there the words 'subject consultation with the CPL lead members', is appropriate to insert in there? How do people feel about that? Just so that we have some form of words on the record.
Well, I think we're approving the movement of the money this now. I think we are approving the movement of the money now. I thought you said that was okay and we have to have a consultation separately with CPL. Is that what we agreed? I thought that's what we agreed.
Yeah, because I don't think it can be subject to that because that may suggest it may not happen. So I think it can be an additional note to say and that there will be consultation with that committee.
Okay, thanks. So we all agreed then? Thank you. That's unanimous. Okay, let's move on to item ten. The capital approvals, please, Amy.
Hi, yeah. So I had to introduce myself. I'm David Watkins. I'm the finance manager for the capital team. This is the usual monthly report regarding the changes that have been brought forward for the capital programme. However, it also does include a detailed appendix on the outturn position as well because it's a formal requirement that the overspend, underspend and the slippage that was noted in the outturn report is formally approved as budget amendments as well. So I'll just say that the appendix two, that is part of this document, reflects the outturn position, as I discussed it in the outturn report, but also contains detail on each individual capital scheme, how we outturned at the year end and how we categorised experience against the budget. And there's also a small description as well about the reason for any variance. So that's, like I say, quite a large appendix, but the overall recommendation is just that the approval is given to the overspend or underspend and the overall slippage and reprofiling budgets into future years. So I don't intend to go into that appendix in detail, but obviously happy to second questions that members have got on it if they have any specific items. So in terms of the general approvals that have come forward this month, transport regeneration and climate change, bringing forward feasibility on four new twenty-mile-hour schemes as part of the citywide rollout, this time covering Collegiate, Arbuthnot, Greenwich Side and Cemetery Road. That's for one hundred and twenty-eight K across those schemes, funded from the local neighbourhood transport complementary programme. Also bringing forward feasibility on three road safety schemes, Carwood Road, Ecclesfield Road and Sheppcut Lane, again funded by the local neighbourhood transport complementary programme, of forty-six K. There's a theme around the funding here. The next one is the Public Rights Way Phase Two. So this is three hundred and four K for works to the Public Rights Way network, so the footpaths, bridleways, et cetera. The schemes, the individual footpaths are noted in the approval document and that's to move towards delivery of those improvements. Also being added into the programme is the feasibility and initial concept design for the access road at Parkwood Springs, which is four hundred and five K funded from the nineteen point four million levelling up funding that was awarded towards Parkwood. So this, like I say, is a concept design for an access road that will open up the site so it can be developed. So that's estimated to be quite a substantial project, which we should see the results of this feasibility work shortly come forward for the next stage of that scheme. We've got the Crooks Valley Road Safety Scheme now moving into its delivery stage. That's increased by two hundred and fifty-five K to, like I say, move to delivery of that. Again, the details of how that will be implemented are in the report, but it's at the junction with Harcourt Road. We've got a small change only of eight point three K in the Brookhouse Hill Forge Dam parking scheme. It's brought here because it's actually a change in scope. The original approval that was given was for it to be double-yellow lines to restrict the parking, but that is now going to be changed to a restricted parking zone, rather than the utilisation of double-yellow lines. And that is being funded from the Road Safety Fund that was put aside from the community infrastructure levy a couple of years ago. Another public, the phase one Public Rights Way scheme is just here again to notice change of scope. The footpath one seventy was originally part of this scheme. It's been moved into phase two. So that's just for members to know. The double-yellow lines skate programme, this is a rolling programme. We receive requests annually for the implementation of double-yellow lines to assist traffic flow. And these notices, there's been quite a significant delay to that programme due to the new traffic regulation order system being brought in. So there was twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-four, twenty-five requests still not implemented. So this is the putting the budget in place in order to be able to deliver those this financial year. And the Upper Don Valley flood scheme, as I know there might be a question on this as well, so I'll maybe try and pick that up as I speak to this. So this is going to be part of, obviously, there has been phase one to this scheme. Phase two is about the, currently in the development stage. And these flood schemes tend to be, as we spoke about the dam schemes earlier, very, very complex in terms of design and getting that right before we move towards delivery. So initial design work began with some community infrastructure levy funding for this. As that's developed, the team have, you know, I've seen that in order to get to a stage where we can bid to the Environment Agency to secure the full funding for this, which is going to be, I think, in tens of millions to deliver this scheme, a lot more work was needed. So they have gone to the Environment Agency, made this point clear. And the Environment Agency... So they have gone to the Environment Agency, made this point clear, and the Environment Agency have come back with the funding, you know, to be able to deliver that. So basically, it's of schemes of this size, we tend to get an iterative development of it. And that's why we've seen such an increase from sort of like one million up to two million just to develop this. But we've, we've had the funding offer from the Environment Agency and they're happy for us to proceed with that. And hopefully we should get to a final business case stage with them to unlock the full funding for that scheme. But it could be, you know, a significant length of time before we get to that, that point. Continuing on, there's another Upper Don Valley scheme, this time it's in relation to buses. It was a scheme that was to deliver improvements to bus journeys on that Upper Don Valley corridor into the city centre. So previously committed approved one million pounds roughly of feasibility funding, which had been secured from the combined authority. However, the main scheme is now expected to be delivered from a future round of city region sustainable transport funding and not this particular round. So the design work's going to be reduced at this stage. So there is going to be work done so that we've got a project that is ready to move should the next, when the next round of CRSTS funding comes in. So we're reducing that budget down to six hundred K and that's to facilitate the delivery of other elements of the CRSTS programme that are more well advanced. And Stockbridge Towns Fund shop fronts. So again, this has previously had an approval for around six hundred K, but that was in December twenty two, quite a while ago. There's been more, Stockbridge Towns Fund programme has gone through several revisions, shall we say, working with the Towns Fund Board, increasing costs on the hub and other decisions being made. They do want to progress with the shop front scheme. More detailed design work has been done and cost assessments and it's now assumed around one point eight million in order to approve the shop fronts. It will be delivered by Sheffield City Council by entering into legal agreements with the individual shop owners. So at this point, three units have been identified as moving on ahead as exemplar ones and with the expectation that the rest of the fifteen units that are on that particular block will come forward afterwards. Then another large scheme that's coming forward this time is the Little Don Link, which is to provide a pedestrian and cycle link from the new housing development, Utter Bridge, into the village centre itself, because at the moment that requires a bridge, is going to require a new bridge to cross that river because at the moment residents there are having to come back out onto the main road and back around to access the village centre. So this is going to provide a pedestrian and cycling route to make those journeys easier. There are, the route's been identified, but there's still a number of risks to the viability of this scheme around some ecological works and an assessment of the type and size of the bridge required. However, there are funding restrictions on this. The funding that we're expecting to use expires at the end of March twenty seven and the construction of any bridge is always a long process. So what we're bringing forward here is the approval for the full amount of funding we expect to be required, which is two point nine million to deliver it. But what we're saying is it's going to be delivered in a two-stage design and build manner. So we're only, at this point, going to commit to initial one hundred and eleven K of spend with a contractor who will develop the detailed design, undertake the work with the Environment Agency to ensure we've got all the relevant permissions in place. Like I said, it's particularly time sensitive because of where it's located. There are certain nesting seasons and other considerations we have to take into place when we can even do surveys. So that's why at this point we're bringing it forward for the full amount. So if we can progress and everything goes to plan, we don't need to return to delay the delivery. But it's just assured that by the time we get to the end of stage one, we will know whether we can proceed or not. And that's all we're actually going to commit to spending at this point. It's just putting that notional budget in place now. But I just want to make sure members were aware that there's, it's still, a still project with a number of unknowns and variables around it. Under adult health and social care, we're putting in place, this is one we bring forward each year, the annual budget for the disabled facilities grant funding we receive from central government. So there's a breakdown of that across the various categories. We use against the majority, going against the mandatory disabled facilities grant, which is at the moment thirty K per household. But we have other schemes, we have a discretionary top-up element and we have an accelerated scheme as well, particularly for around people at end of life where we want to put something in place quickly. But this is just putting in place that annual budget that is funded fully from the disabled grant funding we receive from central government. Housing, we are adding in seven million or sort of drawing down from our essential works allocation to continue the electrical upgrades programme. So this began in around twenty 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 one and was intended to deliver the upgrades, electrical upgrades required to our properties. Costs were greater than expected or anticipated initially for the scheme, for the housing we've already delivered. So it's been calculated that in order to meet our full fourteen and a half thousand properties that we need in work, we need to add in a further seven million pounds into that programme. However, we are doing that by extending the current contract, which is at the rates that were tendered when the contract originally was put in place. And so it's considered the best value way of doing this. Under heating and carbon efficiency, we're just going to reduce that allocation actually to the major repairs reserve because what they can deliver with that in revenue are stock, further stock condition surveys on the housing stock, which is an integral part of the new capital plan they're putting together to get accurate stock information data on all our stock. Then under education, children and families, we are putting one hundred and forty three K of special provision capital into the Hansworth Bent Screen Hub relocation. So we currently have a hub at Westfield School for SEND pupils. That is, Westfield School are no longer going to host that, it's going to move to a caretaker's property at Hansworth and we're putting one hundred and forty three K into that. This is where the addendum to the report comes in. Initially, that grant was going to go to Nexus Trust because they were going to be the academy that were, Bent Screen Special School were moving into and that academyisation is expected to happen on the first of June and it didn't happen. So the grant will actually go to Bent Screen School now until such time as the academyisation occurs. We're also putting further funding into the Peaks Campus, five hundred and fifty K to move on to phases two and three of that. So we put some initial funding in to get, to move this campus to a special SEND post sixteen provision. It's going to increase from a hundred currently to two hundred in September twenty five and three hundred pupils capacity by September twenty twenty six and there are just additional works which are detailed in the report that are required to do that. Stockbridge Hub, again, it's another SEND hub. We've put that in place, opened last year, I believe. Since it started operating, there have been identified further capital investments required in order to make it usable to its best, to get the best out of it, should I say. And we're making a grant to the trust, Nexus Trust, in order to be able to deliver those improvements of one hundred and seventy one K. And then we've got another couple of new SEND hubs to be put in place at Gleedless Primary School and Woodhouse West, working with the South East Sheffield Trust. And we're in tune to a funding agreement with them to deliver ten places each at Gleedless and Woodhouse. And I think what I would say is that's part of the putting more local SEND provision into mainstream schools, which is hopefully helping to address in the longer term the revenue pressures around transport because you've got that provision closer to where it's required. Strategy resources, there's a couple of increases to the allocations that we monitor with capital programmes. So these aren't specific schemes, but these are the allocations that we have for our maintenance of our corporate estate. So there was a one hundred and seventy K revenue contribution that was made towards the end of last financial year that we're reflecting in this approval. And a hundred and seventy four K where works have been undertaken on behalf of HRA owned properties. And so that's just been reimbursed back into the corporate funds so that we're not cross-funding the general fund and HRA. And I think that is everything on there. Just to note that the grant funding agreements all relate to the education provisions where we're in tune to agreements with academy trusts or schools in order to deliver those. Is that okay with everyone?
Yes, thanks, David.
Yeah, just my members, there's an item on there about Stockbridge Towns Fund. We're in the pre-election period for the Stockbridge and Upper Don by election. So you can discuss that matter, but please keep discussions, items that are necessary to discuss the matter that's on the agenda and in the report rather than any wider points around the Stockbridge Towns Fund.
Okay, Castle Smith. Thank you. Guess what my question is going to be on? So yes, the Stockbridge Towns Fund. It's a question of governance. So as I understand, if I've read this correctly, the Stockbridge Towns Fund, it's not a change in the total scope, but they want the work to be done for the shop fronts in individual stages, which in my experience means that the cost is going to go up, it's going to be more complex to manage as the project. They've made this change to the way in which it's going to be delivered. Is that going to introduce any difficulties for the implementation side of things, Damien, which would be yours? And I hope I've skirted around stuff appropriately there.
I've raised this issue with the project manager about how it was going to be delivered and asked, this is the way that we intend to progress. I think the issue has been securing the agreements with the individual properties. There is, I think, there is the potential for that, for the cost to increase on that. Well, not to increase from this, but it's, I think the allowance has been made within this budget for, to reflect the fact that it might not progress one after another, after another, as quickly as we might hope. But quickly, that's not known at this moment, but as far as I know, that's the allowance they've made for that.
And Castle Chapman?
Thank you, Chair. Page two eight two, the Utter Bridge travel link. We're only just coming to detailed design and tendering. And yet if nothing is completed by March twenty seven, we lose the money. So is a timeline being worked to? Are we going to make sure that it's all completed by March twenty seven?
I would certainly hope so and that is why usually in this, in this case where there were so many unknowns, my, our initial challenge back as finance was, we don't think it's quite ready to come forward at this point. But in order to meet these deadlines, in order to give it that opportunity to get to that stage, we needed to bring it now. And that's why I wanted to make clear to members that, yes, there are risks associated, but the risk of not starting it now was to definitely not be able to deliver it. So it was, and that, again, that's why those discussions have been had with briefings to members of TRC, that it's one of those where it's now or never in terms of the ability to achieve that deadline. And we certainly didn't want to be in a position where we were definitely taking it off the table. So that's, that's the position. And yeah, we will be very, very closely monitored.
Thank you, Castle Slater.
I'll do both at once this time. Two seven five, this is regarding the work at Parkwood Springs. It's saying there four hundred and five K for a, I'm trying to find the exact word I didn't get used, a concept design. Is that the same as a detailed design? If not, is there a plan to get to a detailed design where they can build off it? And then the second one was, sorry, this might be an accounting question, so it might be of interest to me only. But on page two eight five, I noticed there are actually loans, not payments out. Therefore, surely we should be expecting at least some of it back. How are we accounting that? Is it coming to us, is it going to someone else? Who's bearing the risk of that, et cetera?
And so I'll take a minute. So Parkwood Springs, yes, that's, obviously there's a much wider project potentially at Parkwood. This is concept design. Detailed design is actually, they're wanting to, they've done quite a bit of this work already. You know, they've made, they've made starts on this, they're going to recharge some of this work to capital. We want to, we need to get the full budget in place. There's, there's been some work at risk in order to get this moving. And they're hoping to bring the, the one next, next month, hopefully will be the full budget for detailed design and delivery in the similar way to what we're doing with the Utter Bridge scheme, which will be a two-stage design and build. There remains quite, you know, quite a few unknowns around the overall envelope of the Parkwood scheme. So we've asked for a full report to be done, to be brought to TRC to, so that members of that committee can see what the overall position on Parkwood is. So yes, the road, again, it needs to move forward in order to be able to hit the funding lines. But what we'll probably bring forward is, like I say, something, the same wording that we've used at Utter Bridge, that will be awarded a two-stage design and build where stage one will stop if we've not got certainty that we can progress the whole of the Parkwood scheme within the funded envelope we've got. So yeah, if that's, that ratios on that one. In terms of the loans on disabled facilities grant, they go as a charge against the property usually. So they're not effectively, we don't, that's when we recover them and that's why they're classed as loans rather than it's grant funded. So we may recover that funding as a charge against the property when it's sold at a later date. As such, we tend to expense it, to err on the side of prudence, you know, so we, we will, we don't, we won't have a firm date on when we recover. So that's why we, we put them down as an expense at this stage. But obviously they are monitored in terms of there is a charge against those properties to recover that.
Thank you, Castle Fitz.
Thank you, Chair. On page two hundred and seventy four, under public right of way phase two, it's good to see the works that are being planned because maintaining public rights away is really important. But I was just wondering, do we know how the list was decided? Is it some kind of priority order? And I was asked, do we know if four three six A, one of the Sheffield footpaths, which is the main path alongside the River Loxley from Marlin Bridge, is on the roadmap? Because that's been closed for months due to an unsafe supporting concrete structure. Thank you.
I'd have to just check the colleagues in Transport about the prioritisation methodology they've used, but I'm pretty sure there is one. And yeah, I've had to walk around that particular gap a number of times. So I would be, I would be, yeah, I'll check up on that.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you for the report and thanks everyone for their replies today.
Okay, nobody else in the hands raised. I have a fairly complicated question around the send funding and the four schools that are getting send funding. Now, two of them are with Sheffield South East Trust. That's Gleedless Valley and Woodhouse West, which is fine. We've already granted a sum to Stockbridge High to renovate their caretaker's house as a special educational needs facility. And now what we've received now is a further grant to do renovation of the basement to provide additional needs facilities, but it's through another trust, Nexus Trust, who are also doing something at Hansworth Grange through, as you will know, there's an addendum to the report through Bent Screen Special School satellite. When we're allocating grants, it's a legal question. It's the trusts that have the ownership of the schools and therefore the buildings and facilities are therefore their responsibility. Should not trust be awarded, sorry, should not grants be awarded to the trusts that have the ownership of the schools rather than another trust which is providing what is? is a lease arrangement to provide SEND services? Is that not the school's responsibility to deal with the lease and the school therefore apply for the money?
I was just going to respond on just the, the correspondence I've had with the commissioner around, you know, who's commissioned these services, and that the trusts in question, Nexus and Minerva, are working very closely together and have gotten a service level agreement between each other, between themselves, that obviously we're not party to, but it's the work that's, the work we've done with those trusts is, this is how they've wanted to structure that agreement, in that I think Minerva Trust have wanted to place the emphasis on Nexus to be able to, you know, commission and deliver the works that they want to. I understand they're acting under a service level agreement that they've got with each other for the provision of the service, and that's why they've asked it to be structured in this way. Legal colleagues have obviously worked on it, and they've prepared the, the details that you see before you, but I don't know if David's got any other comments.
I haven't got any detail on this, but you would probably issue the grant to the body that was undertaking the works for, for the grant. Because I think if you did it to another organisation who then passed it on, I think that would introduce more complexity and might have tax implications as well. But I, 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 I'll be, I'll be honest, I don't know the details of this particular arrangement.
Yeah, could we, could we follow this up? Because in my judgment, the trusts, a school trust is responsible for the buildings and everything that's associated with the school, and therefore when it comes to development or renovation, that trust should be responsible for what goes on within those schools. A lease is a lease, providing a service, and I'm not quite sure whether the, the lease provider should be the one that gets a grant to do refurbishment work on another trust school. Because as you can see, Stocksbridge did have grant money to that trust, their own trust, to provide a SEND hub, and now this arrangement has come through another route to extend it, and it's been complicated, and I just wondered maybe we should have some clarity here?
We can get that information for you.
So can we move to recommendations then? To approve the proposed additions variations to the capital programme, this is in appendix one. Approve the budget adjustments required as part of the financial year-end programme procedures, as detailed in appendix two. And approve the council entering into agreement to provide funding to third parties as identified under appendix three, which is the one that we need a bit more information on. I also know, by the way, in the addendum, which is important, is that Bent Screen Green Satellite Hub relocation, that Bent Screen School isn't in this trust yet, and therefore the money is going to Bent Screen School, who are going to pay for the renovation of Handsworth Grange, I find this, this is why it gets complicated. But in the meantime, can we agree these recommendations? Okay, thank you very much, that's all agreed. And that concludes the business for this afternoon. Thank you very much for everybody and for all your contributions. You'll get to the hero next time. Thank you.